Welcome. Thank you for attending our recognition ceremony. And today, we'll be recognizing, and we have our guests here to present. Wait, wait. Yeah. Oh, here it is. Yeah, because it was only one. It was the Adopt a Teacher Program.
Yes. Good afternoon. Board President Stewart, Vice President Gode, members of the board, Superintendent Cole. It is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Richard Flicker.
We don't have any of the teachers here yet.
Okay, you want to wait? Is it okay if we?
Is there somebody else?
Perfect.
Well, good evening. Hello, I'm Haley Miller with volunteer public schools. Oh, hi. I'm here to recognize our outstanding Partner of the Month. And this month, we are so excited to recognize Changing the Outlook, Outlook, excuse me, or CTO. It's a student-led organization at LSU dedicated to empowering children in under-resourced communities. Their mission centers on helping young people build confidence, see their own potential, and envision futures full of possibility. But what makes CTO especially remarkable is the way these college students show up consistently, compassionately, and wholeheartedly. This organization started just last fall, and they started partnering with La Salle. They visit up to two times a month, putting on fun and unique events and crafts. If you can see in the pictures in the slideshow, they conduct fundraisers to be able to put on these events for our students, and they promote community service to multiple LSU groups. Principal Williams at La Salle shared, "This group consists of college students who not only give their time, but also their resources. They are committed to supporting our students' academic growth. We are so happy to have them working alongside the staff and students at La Salle, and we look forward to their continued support." So that was last fall, and now they are partnered with nine to 12 schools around our district. They're showing up consistently and donating their time and their resources to impacting our students. So tonight, we proudly honor and recognize Changing the Outlook. And tonight, we have Ms. Kamora, the founder and president, and Matthew, the vice president. They're going to share a few words about their perspective.
Good evening. My name is Kamora, and I just want to say thank you for this opportunity to allow us to share a few words about our experience in your school district. On behalf of Changing the Outlook, we're incredibly proud of the partnerships that we have built within your schools, and even more proud of the impact that we've been able to make. As college students, from the beginning, our goal has been simple: to support educator students in meaningful ways and be the true role model students need and that they may not be receiving at home. We have seen firsthand how our impact has been in these schools as well as in the students' lives.
How you guys doing? I'm Matthew, Vice President. But what stands out to us most is the dedication and openness of your staff, of every success we've had in our schools and in their shared success, made possible by your leadership, your teachers, your commitment, and your students' creativity and curiosity. Going out into the schools, yeah, it's fun, yeah, it looks good on paper, but that's something that's real in the community, and the kids look forward to it. They look forward to seeing us building those relationships. They can say, "Oh, my gosh, hey, Matthew, remember we talked about this?" And we can build the real relationship, whether it's serious or fun, whether it's arts and crafts, whether it's a field day, whether it's a lunch, where I'm getting to know them. So I thank you guys for letting us come in.
And we thank you guys.
Thank you.
And as we continue to work towards our partnerships throughout the school years, we're excited to continuing to strengthen it and build and change students' lives. We're committed to listening, learning, and evolving with you guys and your schools and making a real difference in the community. And thank you guys again for trusting us with your schools and the opportunity to contribute back to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you go, yes.
Come get a picture.
We're still waiting on our teachers, so we'll just wait until they arrive, and we'll
take that up then. Mr. Win, no, don't sit down. Next, Madam Secretary, can we have our call to art, roll call?
District Four, President Stewart. Vice President Gode, board members, Superintendent Cole. It is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Richard Flicker. Dr. Flicker has been dedicated to being an advocate for education and supporting educators throughout Louisiana. Today, he is here to share an exciting moment for the East Baton Rouge Parish School District as he announces the recipients of the 2025 Adopt a Teacher Program. This program highlights outstanding elementary teachers with less than one year of experience who make a difference in the lives of our students every day. And Dr. Flicker, with his team, will recognize those teachers for their dedication, passion, and impact to the East Baton Rouge Parish School System. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Richard Flicker.
Thank you. It's good to be back. This is the 29th Annual Adopt a Teacher Project. It started with five teachers, and we thought it was a one-time deal, and we have now given grants in the several hundreds of dollars each to 663 new elementary teachers in EBR in the 29 years. So once we start something, it's the Exchange Club of Baton Rouge. We're one of close to 600 exchange clubs around the United States. This club here in Baton Rouge was chartered 29 years ago. So this was our first project when one of our members was lamenting that her daughter had spent a lot of money out of her pocket, and then she said, "I've spent a lot of money out of my pocket, and the school year hasn't begun." So we named it Adopt a Teacher. We had no money, so we each donated some money, and the school board sent us five teachers, and we thought, "Well, that was fun." And here we are, 663 teachers later. The people that are with me, my team, Lillian Grossley, she's a past president of the Exchange Club of Baton Rouge, and Alma Gathers, who is the other charter member 29 years ago beside myself. We had a lot of people, some move, some die, some leave organizations, but Alma and I have been in it from the beginning, and Lillian, not long after that. So let me just thank our sponsors. Without their donations, we wouldn't have this program. It would be a fraction of what it is. SchoolAid, which I want to plug, they have been with us from the beginning, and their contribution every year allows us to give the teachers more than we may have raised. You may know they're closing their store here at the end of the year, another month and a half. Everything is 50% off. I bought a bunch of stuff in the last day or two to put in these goodie bags at SchoolAid, so they may go there and not find anything left for the gift cards, but they will be operating online, where a lot of their business has moved to over the decades. And so you can still shop at SchoolAid, and the teachers will be getting gift cards to SchoolAid that they can use, you know, and purchase things online. So SchoolAid's our biggest contributor. Macy's, in the Mall of Louisiana, first-time contributor to this project and a sizable contribution. Louisiana Lottery Corporation, almost from the beginning. Capital One Bank, also over 20 years. Giraffe Prints, a T-shirt printing company on Government Street, does an excellent job. They have been with us about 10 years now. Citizens Bank and Trust, several years that they have been a major contributor. The Exchange Club, of course, and we've been around almost 30 years. And then the Baton Rouge Area Society of Psychologists, they got involved our second year. I think I was president then, I'm president again, but they have contributed every year since our second year. And then individuals who have made donations, Lillian and John Grossley, myself, Nadine and Scott Cooper, who could not be here, Scott is our treasurer, Dr. Curtis Vincent and Dr. Christine Angelos, both colleagues of mine, clinical psychologists. I'm an industrial psychologist, but I'm president of that organization also. So let me introduce the teachers. We may have gained one or two more. I know there were... Raise your hand if you are a teacher in the Adopt a Teacher Project. Okay, we're supposed to have at least five, possibly six confirmed, and we're going to introduce the two who are here. If they'll come forward, Neil. Neil Aldwin, is that how you say it? Garcia, he is a third-grade teacher at Progress Elementary, and he is being... He's being adopted by the Psychology Society, the Baton Rouge Area Society of Psychologists. Don't leave, we're going to do a group photo, even if there are just two of you. Okay? Jerry Burkett, Burkett II, not here, he's at Park Medical Academy. He's being adopted by Citizens Bank. And then the others, all from the Exchange Club, with support of all our sponsors. Ma Theresa Sabuku, Sabuko, a third-grade teacher at Park Medical Academy. Leila Lanehart, Wildwood Elementary, a third-grade teacher. Annie LeBlanc, Crestworth Elementary, a pre-K teacher. Loronda Milligan's, LeBel Air Elementary, pre-K. And we do have with us Somalia Swing, if she'll come up, a fifth-grade teacher at Magnolia Woods Elementary. And if anyone else walks in, but we have swag bags, I used to call them goodie bags, but we're the swag bag now, that they will really be excited about, because there have been times we'll give a teacher several hundred dollars, and they open the swag bag, and they hold up a dozen pencils, and they scream, "Pencils, pencils!" And it's like, you've got several hundred dollars. Pencils, pencils! So you have a lot... Another teacher just walked in? Are you with Adopt a Teacher? Nope? Okay. So we will get the other teachers their gift cards. We... This was the smallest number of teachers that applied, and we gave the majority of them gift cards, and the minimum is, I believe, $450. So it adds up, and we're approaching $300,000 over the years. And like I said, 663 teachers. There were a couple of years we had 41 and 42 teachers. So seven is the smallest number we've had, but next year, it could be back up in the twenties. Thank you, thank you for the opportunity, and hopefully, we'll be back for the 30th Annual Adopt a Teacher Presentation.
And we thank you guys.
Mr. McCann, some board members coming down to take pictures.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Try to keep you informed.
And that concludes our recognition. And we're going to go ahead and call to order our regular board meeting, November 2025, and the invocation will be led by school board member Nathan Russ, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Cadet First Lieutenant Kennedy Nguyen of Liberty High School, accompanied by Colonel Retired Jonah Hughes. Can y'all please stand?
Please pray with me. Father God, we praise you today, and we thank you for another day to live in your will and to glorify you, Lord. We pray that everything we do here tonight will honor you and honor the children and the families that we serve. We pray that you will give us or show us what your will is and all the decisions that we will make tonight, and we thank you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Good evening. It's esteemed members of East Baton Rouge School Board and Superintendent Lamont Cole, it is my distinct honor to introduce one of my most dedicated JRTC cadets of Liberty High School JRTC Patriot Battalion, Cadet Lieutenant Kennedy Nguyen. He's a senior and is in his fourth year at our JRTC cyber program. He serves on the battalion staff as our Public Affairs Officer. He developed our JRTC website. Also, he's active member of the Raider Team, Rifle Team, and the Junior ROTC Leadership Academic Board as a team member. Cadet Nguyen was one of the four cadets from Patriot Battalion who traveled last year to Washington, D.C. to compete in the National Junior Leadership Board, competing against 40 other states, and we placed 14th in that division. Cadet Nguyen has a GPA of a 4.56. He's enrolled in six AP classes. He is ranked fourth in his graduating class at Liberty High School. At Liberty, he participated in the Beta Club, the National STEM Society, the Health Occupation Students of American Club, and upon graduation, he will attend Louisiana State University and major in biological science. Cadet Nguyen emphasized consistency, commitment, symbolizing what it means to be a JRTC cadet. He has grown into the responsibility that we have given him, and he has proven himself to his peers and to his instructors. Ladies and gentlemen, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, Cadet Lieutenant Kennedy Nguyen of Liberty Magnet High School.
Mr. Nguyen, no, don't sit down.
I have the pleasure of sending you this from the school board and superintendent. Congratulations for all the homework that you've been doing.
Next, Madam Secretary, can we have our call to art, roll call?
District Four, President Stewart.
Present.
District Seven, Vice President Gode.
Here.
District One, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District Two, Mr. Lanis. District Three, Ms. Powell Lewis. District Five, Mr. Lewis. District Six, Mr. Russ.
Present.
District Eight, Ms. Sule.
Here.
District Nine, Mr. Martin.
Present.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you. Next, we move to item B, meeting minutes, approval of the school board minutes of the October 2nd, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting, and the October 16th, 2025 Regular Board Meeting, as published in the Official Journal. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Martin.
Yeah, Martin and Russ.
Comments from the public?
Comments from the public?
None online.
None online? Any board comments? Madam Secretary?
Voice vote.
And can we have all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
And here we are. Yeah, okay.
Now, Madam Secretary, conduct the vote.
Madam Secretary, yeah, we see it.
Thanks.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving along to item C, information only. Number one, monthly financial report. And two, personnel changes. Do we have any comments from the public?
Board only.
Board? Okay. Moving along to item D, receive as information. And here we have our superintendent.
Thank you very much, Madam President, Vice President Gode, members of the board, those of you who are here and those at home. Thank you for allowing me to serve as superintendent for another 30 days. Sincerely appreciate you. As we move through the month of November, we have much to be thankful for across the district. I am thankful for each member of the school system and our community at large who actively support our district's goals. While much has been done, we still have so much more to do. As with each month, tonight's updates reflect key areas of attention within the goals of our strategic plan. Tonight, we'll highlight a few items under employee development and operational excellence. First, and then we'll spend the bulk of our time discussing the released test scores today for school and district performance scores related to student achievement data. Under the area of employee development, congratulations to the EBR School Administrative Director of Communications, Taylor Gass, and Nathan Height, principal at Westdale Heights Academic Magnet School on being named Baton Rouge's Business Reports 40 Under 40. Ms. Gass and Dr. Height, we're proud of your work and joining in the celebration of your success. Last night, we knew both of you had a tremendous time with your families as you were celebrated at the actual event. Thank you both for daring to be great. The community engagement team hosted a free parent workshop entitled "Navigating IEP and IEP Systems" on Wednesday, November 12th. The meeting was well-attended by parents as well as educators. Under the area of operational excellence, the Phase 2 implementation, 20 additional schools of the new visitor management system is underway. We are prioritizing this work to keep our campuses safe. The district-level AI task force is working... The district-level AI task force's work is ongoing and continues to meet to align our district plan and vision to statewide guidance in the use of artificial intelligence. A preliminary plan to upgrade the condition at the ESS transfer lot is in its early stages, drawings of being developed by Fusion Architects Incorporated. On the area of student achievement, iCare is sponsoring Novate November Prevention Campaign throughout the month of November. The campaign promotes awareness of the dangers of tobacco and nicotine use through engaging prevention-focused student activities. A student forum was held at Capitol High School on Thursday, November 13th. I and members of our staff enjoyed hearing from the student leaders at Capitol High on ways we can better improve our school system as well as the conditions for them at their school. Today, the Louisiana Department of Education released school and district performance scores. Our team has worked hard to quickly unpack the multitude of metrics included in this release, and I can clearly say that we have made history together. I'm super excited for our students, our teachers, our staff, and our families. We did better, but we still have so much more to do. But a wise man once told me, "Celebrate the wins for one day and then get back to work." So while I am pleased, I'm not satisfied. Tonight, we will take a look at the highlights of this release and follow up with you with a more subsequent and thorough report as we dig into the data that was released today. So at this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Okonski to come up, and I want to say to all of our teachers and paraprofessionals and bus drivers and cafeteria workers and librarians, the board, we have to celebrate the victory, so congratulate. None online. Any board comments? Madam Secretary?
Uh, voice vote.
And can we have all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Ma- and here we are. Yeah, okay. Madam Secretary, yeah, we see it.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving along to item C, information only. Number one, monthly financial report. And two, personnel changes. Do we have any comments from the public? Board? Okay. Moving along to item D, receive as information. And here we have our superintendent.
Thank you very much, Madam President, Vice President Godey, members of the board, those of you who are here and those at home. Thank you for allowing me to serve as superintendent for another 30 days. Sincerely appreciate you. As we move through the month of November, we have much to be thankful for across the district. I am thankful for each member of the school system and our community at large who actively support our district's goals. While much has been done, we still have so much more to do. As with each month, tonight's updates reflect key areas of attention within the goals of our strategic plan. Tonight, we'll highlight a few items under employee development and operational excellence. First, and then we'll spend the bulk of our time discussing the released test scores today for school and district performance scores related to student achievement data. Under the area of employee development, congratulations to the EBR School Administrative Director of Communications Taylor Gass and Nathan Height, Principal at Westdale Heights Academic Magnet School on being named Baton Rouge's Business Reports Forty Under Forty. Ms. Gass and Dr. Height, we were proud of your work and join in the celebration of your success. Last night, we knew both of you had a tremendous time with your families as you were celebrated at the actual event. Thank you both for daring to be great. The community engagement team hosted a free parent workshop entitled Navigating IEP and IEP Systems on Wednesday, November 12th. The meeting was well attended by parents as well as educators. Under the area of operational excellence, the Phase Two implementation, 20 additional schools of the new visitor management system is underway. We are prioritizing this work to keep our campuses safe. The district level AI Task Force is working, the district level AI Task Force's work is ongoing and continues to meet to align our district plan and vision to statewide guidance and the use of artificial intelligence. A preliminary plan to upgrade the condition at the ESS transfer lot is in its early stages, drawings of being developed by Fusion Architects Incorporated. On the area of student achievement, I care is sponsoring Novate November Prevention Campaign throughout the month of November. The campaign promotes awareness of the dangers of tobacco and nicotine use through engaging prevention-focused student activities. A student forum was held at Capital High School on Thursday, November 13th. I and members of our staff enjoyed hearing from the student leaders at Capital High on ways we can better improve our school system as well as the conditions for them at their school. Today, the Louisiana Department of Education released school and district performance scores. Our team has worked hard to quickly unpack the multitude of metrics included in this release, and I can clearly say that we have made history together. I'm super excited for our students, our teachers, our staff, and our families. We did better, but we still have so much more to do. But a wise man once told me, celebrate the wins for one day and then get back to work. So while I am pleased, I'm not satisfied. Tonight, we will take a look at the highlights of this release and follow up with you with a more subsequent and thorough report as we dig into the data that was released today. So at this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Okonski to come up, and I want to say to all of our teachers and paraprofessionals and bus drivers and cafeteria workers and librarians, the board, we have to celebrate the victory. So congratulations to all of you. And Andre is going to take us through the data. Thank you so much. But Andre, you know my two words.
Yes, sir. I will try to be brief, but it's an exciting day in EBR. And so, good evening, everyone, and thank you for, once again, for letting me be the voice and the face of some exciting news for you in the world of student achievement and academic accountability. So as Mr. Cole said, today, the Louisiana Department of Education released its annual district and school performance scores. We actually received 12 files at 4:46 last night. And so, we have been unpacking some data over the last couple of days and the last 24 hours. And so, what we wanted to do tonight is just answer a couple of key questions for you. What's the district's letter grade? What's the letter grade distribution across our school system? What was the impact of realignment? What does the old formula tell us? Hey, we've been hearing about this new formula. What does it tell us? What was our graduation rate? This year, you guys are used to that grad rate historically lagging behind. We actually got two years in one. So we have 24 and 25 to report to you. And then we're going to celebrate some notable schools in this release and then show our community where they can find some more information. So let's dig in. So, we've heard a lot about the old formula and the new formula. The old formula has been around since 2018, and this marks the last time that we will report on it. It's based on the 150-point scale. The new formula is based on a 100-point scale. No matter which way you cut it, the district remains a C, both in the old formula and in the new formula. You'll notice that there's a significant numerical gap between the scores of the two. You should not let that alarm you. One thing that we want to explain to people over and over again is dropping from the 150-point scale to the 100-point scale, your child's school, your favorite school, will see a decrease in the numerical value. It does not necessarily mean the letter grade has changed, and we'll dig into that. So, if we look at old formula compared to new formula, or current system compared to the future system, how does that grade letter distribution shake out? You'll see the first column is the current system. The middle column is what the new formula simulations are. And then you see the difference count. So that over time, and we can expect with this new system, to see some shifts in some letter grades. And we're going to look at it in the next couple of slides. So let's look at the current system that's been around since 2018. We started this graph for you at 2019 because that was the highest year prior to COVID. And then we saw what COVID did to scores and to school performance in general. You see this grade level distribution here of the number of As, Bs, Cs, and Ds across the district across time. Knowing that the number of schools in each year might have changed because we onboarded some charters during this time, we closed some sites during this time, we consolidated schools, et cetera. But I would draw your attention to two things on this slide. First of all, this slide also tells us the impact of realignment. That aqua box that you see there at the bottom is the school's post-realignment. The black font represents at the end of the school year. So, for example, at the end of the school year last year, there were nine Fs. But right now, there are only six that are active. If you also look at that F column, you'll see that over time, we have decreased the number of Fs across the system. All right, speaking of F schools, one of the things that we always talk about when we look at these releases is the schools that are labeled academically unacceptable. Knowing that schools that are AUS4 or higher are eligible for BESI takeover. So, this is the same slide that I showed you last year with two additions. I've added a column for 2025 letter grade and SPS, or two columns for that. And then on the far right, we've made some notations for you. As you can see, three of the closed sites are now eliminated from our AUS status. But we also had three schools exit AUS status. So, congratulations to Glen Oaks Senior High. Congratulations to Eva Lagarde Learning Center. Even though they were closed, they have formally exited AUS status. And congratulations to Capital High School, who has exited AUS status. We should also shout out two other schools here. Clayburn Elementary is one point away from exiting AUS status under the current formula. But if we apply their scores to the new formula, they are a D. So they would not be academically unacceptable. So, we're excited about the future for Clayburn. And then Wimburn Elementary. Wimburn Elementary was close to that 50, did not make it before it closed. But if you apply the new formula to Wimburn Elementary, they would be a D as well. And by the way, in this current system, we added no new F schools in this cycle. Not many years that I've been able to tell you guys that. So continuing with the old formula details, the excitement continues. This is the highest school performance score to date of this district in this current formula. So I started this job in 2016, I believe, and so I was here for the onboarding of the last system. And so I've delivered this presentation for every time under the current system, and this is the highest score that I've ever been able to report to this board. So I'm excited about that. It's also the first time I've ever been able to say that we have an A in Strength of Diploma. So, congratulations to our high schools, and the news for our high schools continue. They have the highest grad rate to date. They've earned a B in grad rate. And some of you know I was the Executive Director of High Schools prior to this. So high schools are very special to me. And so I have a great time digging into this data, and I look forward to sharing more things with it, about it, to with you. The district performed As, Bs, and Cs in progress letter grades at 96% of its sites. 62% of our direct-run sites increased their school performance scores, and 12 schools increased their letter grades. That's the old formula. Now, if you look at the old formula, what we did for you is we color-coded the indices, and the green ones are the changes. So there were four areas where we did not change. But if you also notice, were As or Bs in all but four areas. And so that's something that we're not used to seeing on this slide as well. You can also see as compared to how the district and the state fared in the same metrics. Some of these metrics will go away next year. And so in particular, we need to pay attention to DCAI, Interest and Opportunities. Those are areas where the district has historically done well and earned As, but they're going away. They will not be measured moving forward. All right. So now, we have the state's new scorecard. So for the next couple of years, you will be used to seeing school performance and district data presented in this format of this new scorecard. It has three columns, one for grow, one for achieve, one for thrive. If you remember when we met back in August and September, we dwelled a lot on the column of proficiency of LEAP scores. So we're going to spend our time on the two external columns tonight. On the far left for growth, the state measures growth in five ways. The first two is by ELA and math assessments. And so that what you see there is the percentage of students who grew and met their growth targets on the LEAP test from one year to the next. The district also receives from the state a report when we get LEAP data of our bottom 25 to 30%. Students are rank ordered. And so what the new scorecard does is it measures the percentage of students on that bottom 25% list who are meeting their growth targets. You'll notice 47.4% of district students in the lowest 25% met their English growth targets. 41% did so in math. That last line there represents English language learners. From one test to the other, nearly a third of them met their growth targets. On the far right column is the thrive category. Those are your high schools. We've talked about the grad rate being the highest to date. The readiness based on a national recognized exam for the majority of our students, that's going to be ACT. SAT, ASVAB, work keys also plays into this. 30% of our high school students met the metric or the mark on the national recognized exam. And then the last one is a college and career readiness accelerator. The old Strength of Diploma is kind of being reorganized under this one. This is where your workforce development, your internships, your IBCs come into play, as well as advanced placement, dual enrollment. So, how do we know what a letter grade is on this new system? What the LDOE did is they took the historical data, and they basically established cut scores using a curve method. The top 10% earns As, the next 20% a B, the next 40% a C, and so on. And so to your right at the bottom, you will see the scale that we will use this year and next year under the new formula. Notice, they divided into schools with high school or with a graduation class and schools without a graduation class. So our K8s in our high schools will not be on the same scales. Our district will not be on the same scale as the schools because it's the curve that has established these cut scores. So, we had the opportunity to participate in Dr. Bromley's call this morning, and I was very appreciative that they shared this slide. And so I asked the superintendent if we could share it with you guys. And what they have shown us is here the impact of the new letter grade system and of the new scale and formula on school and district performance scores throughout the state. So if you look at the first column, you see elementary and middle schools. Middle column represents high schools. The third column represents school systems. And so you can track there in each area, the category where you had the most change. And if you notice, it really manifests itself at the high school level. If you look across the state, you can see that the majority of the declines happened at the high school level. For the most part, folks stayed the same. We were one of the 39 school systems that stayed the same as a C. 30 school systems across the state did decline from one formula to the next. I think you'll see it in our high school data, that it also represents and aligns to this data. We also had some elementaries who improved a letter grade. And so you see that in here as well. Shout out to Wildwood. Shout out to Clayburn. Shout out to Wimburn. We see you. We know that you improved under this new scale. So we talked about graduation. Here's your visual of your graduation rate over time. The green bars reflect years that we've seen growth. The yellow reflects years that we've been stagnant or showed a decline. Of course, during 2020 to 2022 was COVID where there were waivers, where the LEAP test was not, graduation requirement was not in place, and folks could get a waiver. And so then it right-sized itself again in 2023 when it was the 72.9. We did see a release of the class of 2024 this week, and that is at a 75.1. And then the 25 mark is a 76.3, which is the district's highest grad rate to date. By the way, as a frame of reference, the Louisiana average for 2025 was 85%. Okay, Strength of Diploma. I know at least one of you likes this slide and this category, and is going to remind me to remind our listeners out there that this is not 61% of graduation rate. This is 61% of the graduates earned a little line up or something extra on their diplomas. And so these are students who earned advanced placement, dual enrollment, industry-based certifications, so forth. 61%, 61.7%, I should say, of our graduates earned basic and advanced credentials. This is a growth of over 15 points from the previous year. This is why, folks, we have an A in Strength of Diploma. Yes, ma'am, we need to clap and celebrate our high schools. It's very exciting. And I see we have workforce development in the house, and they play a huge part in this. So, the excitement continues. As I said previously, 62% of district-run schools are direct-run and 55% of district-run schools grew in the current formula. Looking at our elementary schools, more than half of them increased their school performance score. Shout-outs to Clayburn and Highland, McKinley Elementary, Baton Rouge Flame, Marydale, Shenandoah, all grew by five or more points. Those folks led the way. Capital Elementary and Twin Oaks both grew on letter grade. At our middle and elementary schools, all of them got a C, 100% of them got a C or higher in progress. They rocked it. Our district-run middle schools got an A in DCAI, which is, if you're not familiar with DCAI, that means you're offering middle school students high school credit, and you get awarded for that. Glasgow Middle School and Eva Lagarde both grew a letter grade. Again, this is where we need the drumroll and the applause to our high school team. I don't know that I've ever said this before. 88% of district-run high schools increased in SPS. Broadmoor, Capital, Terra, Scottlinville, EBR Virtual, all have Cs. Yep. Strength of Diploma's an A, grad rate's an A, and they're the highest to date. Alternative schools, we cannot leave them out, and I hope Ms. Forbes is watching. Arlington is not only an A, but a 100% graduation rate. We know it's a special place, and this makes it even more special. All alternative schools are C or higher. So, this, I feel like Oprah because the excitement continues, but I'll let Mr. Cole and you guys get to be Oprah here. If you remember, back in 20, the summer of 2024, you passed a budget. And in that budget, you said that there was a thing called a school achievement stipend. And you said that school teams who met certain marks would get an extra stipend. So I hope those folks are watching right now because I think Ms. Lopez and I counted about 22 school campuses will receive stipends because of this awesome release that we had this week. You see the AB group? They will receive their stipend. The CDs are the ones that grew by a letter grade and/or by five points. And then the F or AUS schools are the ones that exited AUS status and/or if they were below 40 in the sake of, like Clayburn Elementary, they grew at least eight points. And so, we applaud all of these schools for their work. And thank you to you guys for passing that in the budget. So on Superintendent Bromley's call this morning, if anyone was able to listen, EBR got a couple of shout-outs. And so we'd like to share those with you today. The state always gives, as some of you are aware, the, what they call the Top Gains Award. 21 district sites are recipients of the Top Gains Award, and 12 earned the, what used to be called the Equity Award, now it's called the Opportunity Award. But even more exciting, Superintendent Bromley announced this morning in his media briefing that EBR ranked 10th among school systems for growth. On the achievement side, Mayfair Lab ranks number seven for K8 sites. Baton Rouge Magnet High School ranks sixth amongst the high schools. These two schools were listed and recognized by the department this morning as being the best, some of the best performing in the state. The Louisiana Department of Education also recognized folks for growth this morning, and this one was the one that really made me smile the most. Clayburn Elementary ranks third among K8 sites for growth. Phenomenal work to them this year. Highland Elementary was just right behind them at number nine amongst K8 sites. So, we're going to pause here for tonight, and we've shared a lot of exciting news. But we know that folks want to know where they can learn more about this release and check on their child's school, their favorite school. And we also have some exciting things that we want you to check out. We have a new district webpage announcing Grow, Achieve, and Thrive. It is active as of, I believe, yesterday. And so check it out. It's out there. It's going to have some things added to it in the next 24 hours, including a video starring Mr. Lamont Cole himself and Amber, our district mascot. So please check out our new video explaining Grow, Achieve, and Thrive and our results to folks. Our district dashboard page is live. We will be working over the next week or two to upload this new information to update it. The LDOE library did go live around 10 o'clock this morning with the new reports. So those of you who like to check out the data reports there, as I do, they're all your favorite and familiar places. Their school finder allows you to compare one school to the other. They're asking that we give them till about midterm January. They'll have it updated. And then last but not least, the backup reports and the online copy of this presentation, if Ms. Arman hasn't already loaded to Board Docs, we will have loaded to Board Docs. And then last but not least, as the superintendent likes to say, success is in the support. We want to say thank you to everyone who contributed to this great and exciting day in EBR, a history-making day. Thank you guys for your support. And I'm just going to say, he doesn't know I'm going to say this, but on behalf of staff, thank you to Mr. Cole for his support. So that concludes my report. Are there any questions or?
Oh, no. Thank you, Andre. I want to thank the staff and everybody for their hard work, dedication. But again, Dr. Brister told me I get one day, one day to celebrate because we got to go back to work.
Absolutely.
We got kids in our school system who are still facing academic challenges, and we need to help them. So, I'm pleased, but I'm not satisfied.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Powell Lewis?
Thank you. Thank you for sharing all of this with us. So I wanted to start, well, I had a question, but I'm going to ask that question later. What I want to say to our community and then to all of us, especially those of us who've been serving through transition, you know, because this was a transitional year. Thank you for the money well spent. This money has been spent well. And so to all who are going to experience those stipends, and I've already received a text, and Ms. Lopez helped me to help that particular employee with knowing when her stipend is coming. Still, thank you so much to those of you who signed up to be able to lead the charge in bringing up our AUS schools, our failing schools, or our lower-performing schools. That's what Coach would want me to say. But then also, I want to say thank you to Superintendent Cole as well for allowing people to use their gifts. When we allow people to use their gifts and use their creativity and the talents that they have, this is what you see. And so I want to say thank you, Mr. Cole, Mr. Smith, Ms. Okonski, and everyone else who may have assisted in that. who may have assisted in that process, principals, Ms. Edwards, all of the above. I know that you work hard. Ms. Williams, I see you looking at me back there. All of you work extremely, extremely hard, and we really, really appreciate that. And I just want to say thank you. The other is, you mentioned the different endorsements on diplomas, and I know that there's a civic seal coming. Was that mentioned in any way, or have we embraced that yet?
It's not a part of this release, but we can, when we come back with some more information, we can include that in a future presentation for you.
Okay. And so I look forward to that, because of course, we're shaping our nation with allowing students to be civically informed. And we know that now, in social studies, we're no longer taking a U.S. history LEAP test.
Correct.
But the civics test is the high standardized, or high-stakes standardized test.
And for students where civics is part of their grad requirement, those scores counted. For those students where U.S. history, and I know you understand this as a social studies instructor, if students were U.S. history, then those scores counted in the social studies averages.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Martin?
Thank you. I wanted to echo similar sentiments. This is, this is great forward progress. We really appreciate what everybody that works for the students in this district have done, from the superintendent to the deputy superintendent to all the central office staff, most importantly, to the teachers and paraprofessionals who are in the classroom, working hard with these kids every day. I wanted to highlight particularly the good news with the alternative schools. Coach Lewis and I like to say that those are our most vulnerable students, and they deserve as much support and care as we can give them, because that will really change the trajectory of their lives. So I'm very excited to see the progress in that, in that area. So I'm just, I'm deeply grateful. I want to express my appreciation for, to Deputy Superintendent Smith. It was him working with the staff, you and Ms. Lopez and others, who came up with the proposal for the, for the stipends to encourage exactly the results that we're getting. And so I think that was, I'm very glad that y'all presented that to us, and I'm glad that we had the foresight to pass it. So thank you again to everybody. And then finally, I want to echo what our superintendent says, which is, this is great news. Let's be real happy for today, and then let's go back and remember, we got a lot longer to go. And so let's, let's use this to give us some hope, some positive direction, some momentum, and say, now let's, let's, let's finish the job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. And I would just like to echo the same sentiments that my colleagues and congratulate all of our staff, and also ask them, when they receive their stipend, please don't call in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Okonske. Moving along to, oh, is that it, Superintendent?
No, thank you again. Last part. Next year, the state's accountability system will change. This means we will need to make thoughtful adjustments to meet new expectations, and I believe we can do that. I believe in the power of us. We have an opportunity to make more history for our school system and our city, and we can do that together. We have outstanding teachers and support staff in this district, and I firmly believe we can earn an overall score of an A. Lastly, tomorrow is Friday, November 21st, the last day for students prior to the Thanksgiving holiday. Those of you who work in our central offices around the city can wear jeans and sneakers. I must be feeling good to allow that, but you can and please wear a school system or district t-shirt. As a reminder, schools and district offices will be closed beginning November 26 through to 28. I wish everyone a very safe, peaceful, and happy Thanksgiving. Madam President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. Moving along to item E, reports from board appointees to committees and agencies. Are there any reports? Ms. Soulay?
Thanks. Yes, I just wanted to let you guys know, iCare had their community meeting this past week, and as Superintendent Cole shared, it's Nov-ape, November, but next week, it'll be December, right? And so next week, I mean, next month, in the month of December, iCare is focusing on National Impaired Driving Prevention Month. So one of the things that has been really cool to get to sit on the iCare, with the iCare people this, this year, has been to see how they are reaching kids where they're at, and as things change, that they're changing with them. So if you are on social media, and you didn't know, iCare is on social media too. So you can follow along on Instagram, and on Facebook, and on TikTok. On Instagram and Facebook, it's iCare EBR, and on TikTok, it's iCare EBR Schools. Just kind of see what they're doing, and it's also a great place to see what's coming up with the iCare.
Thank you. Ms. Paul Lewis?
Thank you. I do not have, per se, an update for the committee that I serve on, but I do have a congratulatory statement to make. Our EBR Foundation just completely had a celebratory thread going on via email. Just recently, our executive director for the EBR Foundation has recently been accepted and joined the Rotary Club of Baton Rouge. Congratulations. And I just wanted to commend her on that, because what that means is that there are more partnerships to come for East Baton Rouge Parish and for East Baton Rouge Parish Foundation as well. Also, Madam President, I would like to take a moment of personal privilege. Just recently, on Tuesday, myself and Mrs. Katasha Edwards graduated from the Leadership Baton Rouge class. We are Class of 2025. So I wanted to publicly congratulate her. Before we got to the end of the meeting and everybody else has left, we wanted to make sure that we clapped it up specifically for her. I consider it to be quite a wonderful experience, but you all, in the case that you decide to ever participate in Leadership Baton Rouge, it's one that teaches you about all aspects of industry within our city, and how we all are interconnected, and we get the work done. So kudos to Baton Rouge Area Chamber of Commerce, because they are the ones who house that particular program. Kudos to Leadership Baton Rouge. Kudos to Anita Byer, who works with SSA Consultants and the Baton Rouge Area Chamber. And once again, congratulations to Mrs. Edwards. Thank you.
And congratulations to you. Mr. Martin?
Yeah, I just want to say real quick to my fellow leadership alumni, 2005 class is still the best class. No, and obviously, congratulations to both of you. It's a great program, and I'm glad to have you as alumni of that program with me.
Did you say 2005?
Yes.
Dang.
I'm old. I'm old. Yes, I'm old. Thank you, Ms. Soulay.
Are there any other comments in Board? Okay. Moving along to item F, Mr. Martin?
Thank you. The following items are to be approved as part of the consent agenda and are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a board member so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as an item on the regular agenda for a separate vote preceding the last item on the regular agenda. One, resolution and cooperative endeavor agreements, Louisiana Department of Treasury. Consideration of a request for the following. A, approval of a resolution authorizing the superintendent to sign contracts and binding agreements. B, approval of the authorization for the superintendent to execute a CEA provided by the Louisiana Department of the Treasury and the state of Louisiana for the following. One, $50,000 to provide musical instruments for multiple schools. Two, $25,000 to enhance the sports medicine, medical and agricultural aquaponics curriculum at Northeast High. Item two, professional services contract, Everyday Labs, Inc. Consideration of a request for the approval of a professional services contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Everyday Labs, Inc., in the amount of $138,176.17 to provide and implement a personalized attendance intervention and engagement solutions for middle and high school students, pending source Title IV. Item three, graduation agreements. Consideration of a request for the approval of an agreement between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the following. A, Southern University in the amount of $132,965 for the rental of the F.G. Clark Activity Center for High School Graduations. B, Louisiana State University in the amount of $58,000 for the rental of the Pete Maravich Assembly Center for High School Graduations. Item four, Oversight Committee Financial Update. Consideration of a request for approval of the semi-annual financial tax plan update and the 2024-25 preliminary actual results for propositions one, two, and three. Item five, Test Security Policy. Consideration of a request for the approval of the 2025-2026 East Baton Rouge Parish School Systems Test Security Policy. Item six, Policy Revisions, Human Resources. Consideration of a request for the approval of the following policy revisions. Sub-A, GAAA equal employment, equal opportunity employment. Sub-B, JAA, equal education opportunities. Item seven, Policy Revisions, Exceptional Student Services. Consideration of a request for the approval of the following policy revisions. Sub-A, IDDF, education of students with exceptionalities. Sub-B, IDDFC, camera in special education classrooms. Sub-C, JD, discipline. Item eight, Charter School Renewal, Community School for Apprenticeship Learning. Consideration of a request for approval to renew the charter school agreement with CSAL Middle and provide for related matters. Item nine, Charter School Renewal, the Emerged School for Autism. Consideration of a request for approval to renew the charter school agreement with the Emerged School for Autism and provide for related matters. Item 10, Charter School Renewal, South Baton Rouge Charter Academy. Consideration of a request for approval to renew the charter school agreement with South Baton Rouge Charter Academy and provide for related matters. Item 11, Contract Amendment, CSRS Tillage. Consideration of a request for the approval of an amendment of the Program Management Agreement between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and CSRS Tillage in the amount of $1,850,000 to provide a facility master plan with recommendations of a capital improvement plan. Madam President, before I make the motion, I'd like to ask that item three be pulled from the consent agenda. And with that, I move approval of all the other consent agenda items in one motion.
You said three?
Yes, ma'am. Item three, the graduation agreements.
Okay. Are there any other items that any other board members would like to pull? Oh, let me see. If you want to do the comments online first. We have some online comments that we're going to do first.
Madam President, do we get a second for the motion yet, or?
Oh. I thought you did. Yeah, I'm sorry. It was Cola. It was you and then Cola.
These are the online comments. This is on item, I'll get them in order here. Item F4, Oversight Committee Financial Update from Melanie Stevens. Thanks, everyone, for being here tonight. It would be nice if all of the communities involved would get regular updates and community meetings like the one they had at Mayfair Lab recently. Shareholders sitting at the Hound Board Members at church to find out basic information about the tax plan for 2018 or a large grant from 2023. In the past, if folks would complain, some would blame principals for not keeping their communities up to date, and that kind of cycle is just tiring. Just do better. In an effort to make EBR great, it would be immensely helpful to keep stakeholders informed, whether it's changes to programming implementation of large grants or changes to the construction timeline. Just let folks know what's going on, even when things aren't clear. Unfortunately, some of the lovely people who give presentations at this board are less lovely when stakeholders reach out to them seeking clarity. Daring to be great begins with you. Next is a comment on item F7, Policy Revisions, Exceptional Student Services. This one is from Sadie Abear. Although this discipline language change is a response to state policy, it would help to revise this policy further and omit ambiguities. Some staff feel, may feel students showing joy or talking to each other at lunch as disrespectful, which could reinforce a cold, hostile, adult-centered school environment. Too often, the board insulates they want to shift from old-school practices to welcoming 21st-century schools, insinuate, I'm sorry, insinuate they want to shift from old-school practices to welcoming 21st-century schools, but fail to update policies accordingly. As we dare to be great, it would be great to have, get all staff on board with creating warm, healthy environments for all students and making sure they have real supports to do so. Thank you. Again, on item F7, Martha Williams. Clearly, the goal of this discipline update is to protect staff from liability when they take action related to safety. But the board can further update policies to protect staff so they can deliver instruction, not only from destructive students, but also from various departments using school staff and students to churn out performances or products to make adults' jobs seem relevant. Too much instruction is sidelined for stunts for social media or props for potential audits. Please kindly further help staff who work in classrooms with relevant policy updates, not only protecting them from unnecessary disciplinary action, but allowing them to actively engage in more instruction without directives from above. Less optics, more support. The next comment is on item F11, the Contract Amendment for CSRS Tillage, from Heather Johnson. As part of the facility's master plan, please get representative community feedback on some of these recent constructions, so we don't repeat the same mistakes. One can be grateful for a new building and also see that we can do better. Some of these newer buildings have issues with drainage ditches being too close to students or insecure buildings, or common spaces that have been repurposed for magnet projects, or areas where building security was not well thought out. We do hope, when assessing buildings and communities, that more feedback will be taken into account, so maybe we can start to reverse some of the enrollment trends by being responsive and transparent. Have a good evening. And I will refresh one more time, but I believe that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Goday. And we have a public comment in person.
Good evening, y'all. Tanya Nyman, District 7, and I came with handouts. I originally wrote this in 2021 and posted it to my website. It was then published in the New Orleans Tribune, and I updated it with more recent financial statement, the data from more recent financial statements in 2023. And I bring it to you tonight in reference to the renewal for the charter schools, in particular, the South Baton Rouge Charter Academy. And it is about the way in which, often overlooked or, you know, not discussed, is the way in which lease agreements are used to, to the detriment of our community, and is not a very responsible way to use taxpayer funds. And so I'm just going to read, I only have three minutes or less, so I'm just going to read the first part and maybe the conclusion. Please know that all sources are documented. If you ever want a copy, all you have to do is reach out to me. Of course, I'm provided, I provide my contact information on every comment card, so no hesitation to reach out. So this is, "The more things change, the more they stay the same, lease agreements are redlining. Predatory lease agreements currently allowed by Louisiana Charter School law and their implications for majority African-American communities. In the best of all possible worlds, our laws would be written to ensure that the greatest beneficiary of public funds would be the public as a whole. Unfortunately, laws are often written in such a manner to allow private entities to profit at the expense of the public. Since such arrangements are technically allowed by law, they may be considered legal. However, anyone slightly familiar with history knows legal does not always equate to just." This is the situation we have in Louisiana, particularly in regards to the state charter school law. This law has allowed private companies, primarily from out of state, to establish what amounts to predatory lease arrangements, which enable the private companies to profit at taxpayer expense with no discernible long-term benefit to the public. The current Louisiana charter school law appears to have abandoned a central tenet of previous law, that any asset purchased with public funds constitutes public property. This is still true for traditional public school systems, but not for most charter schools. I think it's important to note that not all states write their charter school laws this way. It is only done, well, Louisiana is one of the few. It may be the only, just like with our ITAP. And that we should be advocating, and I would hope that our elected officials on our local school board would be advocating for a change to the state law, so that we could ensure that if our tax dollars are spent to procure property... that if our tax dollars are spent to procure properties, that they would become public property and remain part of the East Baton Rouge Parish School System. The South Baton Rouge Charter Academy was my focus, was my primary example, the case study that I used in the beginning, because it was one that I could document from the beginning to end. But I think it's important to note that even the CSAL has created a nonprofit foundation for the sole purpose of owning a, for procuring a debt so it could own the building. And so just looking at the ways in which this loophole in our law encourages a financial situation that is detrimental to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nyman. Are there any board comments? Board comments? Okay, Madam Secretary. Oh, I'm sorry. I keep forgetting about that voice vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
All those in opposition? Madam Secretary, can we call for the vote, machine vote?
The motion carries.
Thank you. So we're going to go back to item three, the graduation agreements. Consideration of a request for the approval of an agreement between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the following. A, Southern University, in the amount of $132,965 for the rental of the FG Clark Activity Center for high school graduations. And B, Louisiana State University, in the amount of $58,000 for the rental of the Pete Maravich Assembly Center for high school graduations. Do I have?
I'll ask a comment.
Oh, do we have any public comments?
Sign first. Oh, no, I meant the originals.
Motion to approve by Mr. Russ and second by Ms. Sule.
I'd just like to know that I'm recusing myself from this item.
Okay, thank you. No other comments? And so, Madam, I'm sorry, all those in favor of item three, say aye.
Aye.
All those in opposition, say nay. And Madam Secretary, can you call for the vote?
Please vote.
Thank you. Moving along to item G, new business.
Point of information. I just want to make sure I was in order. I didn't need to recuse myself since I was outside. Is that correct? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. New business, number one, ITEP, International Mezzo Technologies Incorporated. Discussion consideration of an application from International Mezzo Technologies Incorporated for an industrial tax exemption and related matters. Do we have any public comments? Ms. Nyman.
Tanya Nyman, and this is a relatively modest ITEP exemption, but I think that it is important to oppose all ITEPs on principle. Louisiana is the only state that subjects its public school system to this tax abatement program. And don't tell me Texas, because the state legislature reimburses the school systems if they actually lose any money. Louisiana is the only state that subjects its public school system to these tax abatements. And it's just, it doesn't make financial sense, because of course, if a business is being attracted to this area and is supposed to grow the economy, they would also be bringing families with children and would need those public schools to be able to thrive, and they need those tax dollars in order to make sure those schools are prepared to absorb those, that additional population. But more significantly, what's really sad about the International Mezzo one is that, you know, they're really asking for, I think, just a little over $10,000 over 10 years, which is just a little over $1,000. If I have that wrong, please correct me. But what's so sad is by signing on to this program, they make themselves complicit with a policy that is bad for the community and actually bad for them. They're shooting themselves in the foot, because by giving it legitimacy, they actually authorize companies like Exxon to come before this board and request significantly more money. So in 2021, Exxon, even though it made $56 billion in profit, it requested a $23 million tax abatement from this school system, which to me is just immoral. And so I would hope that companies like the size of Mezzo would sort of organize amongst themselves and recognize that they have a greater benefit by asking that our schools not be subject to this tax abatement program and instead of making themselves complicit with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Nyman. Okay, Ms. Paula Paul Lewis.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Nyman, for sharing your sentiments. For me, I just wanted to mention, I have more of a comment than a question, and my comment is, we know that the idea of ITEP is very controversial in our community. I challenge whomever out there is, that is, I'm going to say, objective and nonpartisan and would like to offer information to the public that is not biased one way or the other, that we need a conversation like that for our communities to understand what is ITEP and how does it impact our community. The other is, I would like to just suggest, just publicly, I know that I've mentioned this to my colleagues as well. We know that the idea of canceling ITEP is a far, far stretch. But at the same time, we do know that we desire that all of our eligible high school students will have the opportunity to have summer internships. So I know that we cannot ask a company, I believe I'm correct in saying this, Mr. Shamblin, we cannot ask a company to give us a certain amount of internships in exchange for the tax that we give them, but I do want to encourage them to invite our students to be able to serve as interns, one way or the other, because I've had the opportunity to speak with Ms. Boyd over in workforce development, hey, Ms. Boyd. And one of the things she shared with us, actually through Leadership Baton Rouge when we came to visit, was the cost that it, that we incur for our interns. So an intern from one of our high schools, in order to cover their entire compensation to be able to serve, comes to the price of about $1,575, so $1,575. And so I just want to put that plug out there for our industries that, number one, benefit from ITEP, number two, industries that just simply want to help our students to be prepared for adulthood and workforce development and prepared for industry. We need your help. So I hope that this, you know, reaches far, 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 because we need as much help as we can get to continue to grow our students. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Thank you. As I've said with all the previous ITEPs, in my view, this, this brings in more money to the district, because I don't believe, in most of these cases, these, these expansions would, would happen without the ITEP temporary abatement. And of course, when ITEP expires, then we get the full benefit of those taxes. And so for that reason, I move approval of the item.
Do I have a second? Okay. Motion by Mr. Martin, second by Ms. Sule. Any further comments? Madam Secretary, I know. All those in favor of the items say yea. Yea. All those in opposition, say nay. Madam Secretary, can you do the vote now?
The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving to item two, student expulsion. Discussion consideration of a request to appeal a student expulsion. Board members, have you had an opportunity to review the case? Do I have a motion to hear the matter at the next regular meeting? Hearing no motion and no second, the superintendent's recommendation stands. Moving to item three, appeal hearing, student expulsion. Request to appeal a student expulsion. This item will require an executive session. So with that being said...
Somebody's got to move it.
Yeah, I mean, somebody has to make a move.
Move, we move into executive session.
Thank you. Have a second. Thank you. Second by Ms. Paul Lewis, Nathan Russ, motion.
So we're now going to executive session. We got to vote, we got to vote.
Are there any public comments about this item?
No one.
All right, and all in favor of the item say yea.
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 All those in opposition? All right, we're going to go in. Madam Secret, I'm sorry. Madam Secretary, can you call for the vote?
Please vote.
Everybody's here?
Yes, everybody.
Yeah, I was going to tell you guys what your three options are.
Okay.
I need to let you...
You want to gavel us back in? Okay. The three options before the board are a motion to uphold the superintendent's recommendation, to overturn the superintendent's recommendation, or to modify the decision in some way. So, we'll take a motion, a second, followed by public comment, and then a vote.
Mr. Martin?
I'll move to uphold the superintendent's recommendation.
Do I have a second? Have a motion to uphold by Mr. Martin, and to have a second by Ms. Sule. Do I have any public comments? Any board comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those in opposition? Madam Secretary, can you put in for the vote?
Please vote.
Thank you. Moving along to item H, Mr. Blue.
Announcement of meetings. There will be a regular meeting to be held on December 4, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. in the Central Office Board Room. Please note, there will be no school board meeting on December 18.
Mr. Pugh, don't leave. You have to make an announcement. You can come on, no.
Come on, Mr. Pugh. Mr. Pugh is also serving as our athletic director for the district and is going to make an announcement about the East Baton Rouge Parish Girls Tournament that's going to take place.
Don't be shy.
Board members?
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. It's an honor to serve in any capacity in East Baton Rouge Parish school system. Yes, beginning Saturday, East Baton Rouge Parish Girls Basketball Tournament will be held at Woodlawn High School, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday. It's a wonderful tournament. Please come out and support it. We also have the boys' tournament that'll be starting on December 26, 27, 28, and 29. That'll be held in conjunction with a partnership with Baton Rouge Community College. So, we're going to have the boys' tournament at Baton Rouge Community College. Girls' tournament is going to be at Woodlawn High School, starting this Saturday. The girls have worked really hard. We did a spot on WVLA this morning. The championship game, we'll have a spot on WAFP, the morning of the championship game, to kind of promote it. There are posters posted up at all the schools. I'm going to get some posters here for the board here tomorrow, so we can kind of advertise that, so. Questions?
Yes.
Yes.
How can we find out the scheduling for the games? Like, what times they're at?
On the QR codes, and I'm going to bring that tomorrow.
Okay. Is it online anywhere?
I'm working on that, too.
Okay.
And I'll email it to the board.
Thank you.
I'm also working on a new webpage for the athletic department because we're kind of, you can't even find it. So, we're working with the communications department on a webpage for athletics, so we can broadcast all of that and promote all of those things and kind of do that. So, we're in conjunction, but our web guy's getting married, so he won't be back until December 1st. So, yeah, he's going out of town, so.
Congratulations, Kenny.
Yeah, he's getting married, so congratulations.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Pugh. No, we appreciate it. So, just another reminder, November 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, Girls' Basketball Tournament, Woodlawn High. Go out and support. Thank you, EBR. So, that concludes our meeting, and I wish you guys a happy rest of your evening. We are adjourned, and happy Thanksgiving.